I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call both please.
Alderman Percy?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Kirwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Tudor?
Here.
Alderman Stouder?
In present, you may leave.
Thank you. The current regular meeting of the Wilmington City Council on February 2nd, 2016 is now in session. The council has approved the minutes of January 19th.
Mayor, make a motion to wait until the minutes from January 19th are placed on file.
Motion by Alderman Tudor. Do we have a second?
Hi, Second, Fifth Mayor.
And by Alderman Larry Hall. Roll call both please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stouder?
Yes.
Seven yes, one pass. Motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's report. We have one item on there that's actually going to be continued for the next council meeting, which is the St. Juban Post 1336 BFW. It's an honor restoration project. The gentleman that's in charge of this from Coast City will actually be here on 16th, right?
Yes.
So he'll be running that. That's all I have for the mayor's report tonight. One thing I do want to mention, because I'm very worried to be kind of simplified into the FSW way. Everybody's here tonight with the current situations basically been before. The ordinance license committee, and was brought one time in front of the council, was the possibility of actually reducing the amount of the raffle amount from a million dollars to $100,000. I just wanted to kind of say things are how things have transpired through all this. You know, we all know the Queen of Hearts raffle has been hugely popular with the BFW over the past couple of years. But over those past couple of years, there's been a lot of situations that have arisen in regards to those situations, in regards to the Queen of Hearts as far as traffic congestion. You've heard it all, traffic congestion, people crossing the streets, parking, and overall personnel safety. Throughout that whole process, there was always dialogue that was conducted between not only the BFW, as well as the city council, myself, police chief, and the fire chief, as we got to all these points. And there was times, especially the first one, people can remember with the tent, was getting too large to where the BFW actually did a final draw, and they started again. But each time we've had, you know, we always have these situations. And the people that are really in charge to ensure that our public safety is paramount every day is the people that are actually working out on the streets every day, which is our police force and our fire department. And the fire chief and the police chief had been concerned with some of this large crowds that were congregating there, and were trying to figure out ways to try to help alleviate that congestion. Especially what we see is the posse at large, which is the crowds that come out in the parking lot. So that process began, was presented to the OAL committee, and it was the OAL committee, as they did their, had their discussions with the chief, they presented the $100,000 limit. Created a lot of excitement, a lot of fervor among people within town. I've had calls from both sides in regards to this amount. The one thing, as I was looking and I kind of reviewing on everything, and everything that's happened and transpired since the Queen of Hearts was always there, is we always had dialogue between not only people within the city, but within the BFW. I found that through the last one, that dialogue was lost. And if anybody has to take fault with me because that dialogue, I should have made sure that, ensured that that dialogue continued. Recognizing that situation, I did reach out to Gina and Terry of the BFW, and we had a meeting this afternoon. We continued that dialogue again. We were looking at ways to help resolve the situation that arose from the last Queen of Hearts, that created our situation, and try to find ways to remedy those things as we move forward. Like I said, the first one was the tent. We realized that the tent was the problem when we had all the traffic and all the other issues. Then we realized without the tent, and with the BFW doing changes to people, not having to be present, and stuff like that, we were always looking at ways to try to help minimize the crowds. At no point in time were we in any way concerned with the way the BFW conducted their business within their establishment. It was never a concern. We were always, they were always very attentive to those needs, and ensured that what happened inside was very well managed. We've never had any problems. We were just trying to find ways to curb the large crowds that tend to hang out in the parking lot. So I reached out to Terry and Gina. We've come up with some possible solutions. What's going to go forth with is Terry and, or the members of the BFW and my police chief, fire chief will continue to get forward, to move forward to try to create that dialogue again. Try to find remedies as we go forward. It's at that time, and I'm talking with some of the council members, that I'm going to ask them to suspend the continued readings of this raffle ordinance, since it's in place right now with the $100,000, to see if we can see the solutions that we've discussed, that I discussed with Terry and have worked. Because if they work, then we don't have to work. The biggest things personally that I don't like to do is have to force government to control. I mean, it's something you really want people to be able to control the situations themselves. And I'm hoping that can happen as we go forward. And as that dialogue continues, and if there becomes a situation where safety kind of takes precedence over the amount of the raffle, that there could be some types of solutions that can be worked out between the fire and police chief, as well as the BFW personnel to eliminate that need. So moving forward, we're going to go with, that's where I'm proposing to go with the council. The council is just individual discussions with them, or in favor of doing such. But I wanted also to express to you guys what kind of process we do go through when it comes to ordinances, as you've seen with this one. Typically, when the council passes ordinances, most of them, let's say 90% of them, there are some that don't. But our ordinance is structured to where we actually go through three readings. Basically, what will happen is a ordinance will be proposed at a committee level. And at committee level, if they determine that it's favorable to go to council, will actually send it off to council at the first reading. The first reading does two things. It also opens it up to other council members that are not part of that committee, but it also opens it up to you guys, the public, to be able to see it through the social media, to see it, read it through the paper. And if you have opinions regarding what ordinances are coming up, to be able to call your alderman, call me, or whoever, you know, your representatives, and express your opinions for or against what's being presented. Once that first reading's done, it actually goes to a second council reading. It's not more than a reading. It's not a passage, which is what would have been on tonight, but it's not more than a council, the second reading. After that second reading, it actually goes back to committee. If there's been any dialogue or something that needs to be changed to that ordinance, the ordinance and license committee will review that. If there are minor changes, they'll send it off to council for final, or no changes, they'll send it off to council for actually final passage. If there's major changes, the ordinance and license committee will actually determine whether they need to start the readings again, or to proceed forthwith. So that's where we're at tonight. I know why you guys are here, and I appreciate you guys coming. And I, we're not, as we go to citizens' comments, anything you guys have to say, please step forward and say, we encourage it. We like to know what people are thinking. Sometimes we don't always get what everybody's thinking, and we only get what some people are thinking. So we'll try to get as many as we can. But I do ask you, that if you come forward tonight to speak, that you please state your name. If you have a long name, or some name that's not easily spelled, could you please spell your name so, to help for the city clerk to make those records known? Kind of end it at that, and then open it to the citizens' comments tonight.
My name is Terry Burby, 1.7. Are the same people on the council as on the committee? Are there just all you guys on councils and committees? Is there other people in the city on those?
Committee, committees always consist, there's some committees that consist of full council. Most committees consist of five members of city council. That's how committees are designed. We have an ordinance and license committee, which has five council members. Water, sewer, streets, and alleys has five council members. Police and ESDA has five council members. Now, these guys sit on multiple committees. And then we also have our finance and administration personnel, which consists of the entire council. So that's how that's structured.
I probably don't, I mean, I don't agree with any part of this, but, I mean, I should say that. Safety is always an issue. I agree with that, but I know, can I just talk about it?
No. That's, yeah, it's your, you got the floor.
Well, I know like the bartender up at Hayden's, like the last Queen of Hearts, the bartender herself took home $350 a tip. So you know Tom made a good dollar. The Chinese restaurant's full of people. You know, Berga's is full of people. All the, you know, that went across from Gary's Gas Station, that new bar, PT's, everybody does well. And I agree with the safety concern. I don't know, like those cone cones that are in front of schools, you know, right in the middle of state, you know, slow down for people to crosswalk, or something like that. I want something to think about, but gotta add a bunch of stuff, but all of a sudden it's all, you know.
Can you bring it?
It's like every bowling night, that entire bank parking lot is full of people going down that dangerous 102.
All them trucks and semis coming down there. They're in the parking lot, or they're business. And, you know, Brad brought up a good point, when you talked about how it brings additional business revenue. That was never lost on the council members and the aldermen. And I think that was probably one of the hardest things to overcome, to try to find out where that balance is, to make sure that safety and increased revenue bringing people into town, you know, wasn't diminished to the same thing. And that's why I felt it was important, and when I realized that the dialogue was lost, and that we haven't reached back out and see if we can't find new ways to remedy this without having that limit. We'd hate to have to set a limit at all. I think as we go forward, that once that limit, once people recognize when, you know, we're getting too big, we're getting out of hand. And that's what I'm hoping happens. And the dialogue continues with the fire chief, and police chief, and the BFW, that they'll come to that type of amicable solution to say, yeah, it's starting to get there. Maybe in a couple of weeks, we'll do a final drawdown. So, but that's something that, you know, I've asked, I've talked with my police chief, and had a chance to talk with the fire chief, but I'm sure he's okay with it. And then talking with Terry, that we will get to those resolutions moving forward.
Good night. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Sergeant First Class Jason Sanchez. I'm an active duty soldier, then also a two-year trustee at the BFW. I moved here about August of 2014. The reason why I moved here, I transferred from Fort San Houston to San Antonio, Texas. I train reservists. So I was transferred to the Joliet Training Center over there in Elwood. I drove through this town, and everybody else, there's like 40 active duty soldiers there in Elwood, stationed at the battalion there, which is a reserved battalion that has eight units. And we have soldiers from all over the Chicago area that come and drill there. Most of the other active duty soldiers live Joliet north towards Chicago. But I drove through this town, and I happened to stop at that BFW. That kind of sold me on the place, besides the water and everything. But I decided, well, this is the place I want to live. So I embedded myself, I'm a geographic bachelor also, so I volunteer at the BFW on most Wednesday nights, and then Friday nights during Fish Friday. And I found that they have a bunch, a great organization. A part of that, they support the reserves over there. They had Grilling for Troops. Terry and the BFW supported that. That every year, they come out and feed the reservists. We have eight minutes over 600 soldiers, and they feed them for free. Every year, they also have Christmas dinners in December. The BFW buys turkeys, hams, whatever's asked of them. So if it got shut down to $100,000 limit, I think that it would hinder their opportunities to support our soldiers. They send care packages overseas. They do a lot of good. I myself came in need financially, and was given that, given financial assistance by the BFW. So, and they're able to do all these things by gathering all the money from the raffles and stuff, and being able to do that. And if it, if it got lower to the $100,000 limit, that would hinder the BFW's access to help soldiers with me, or the deployed soldiers overseas. That's all I wanted to say. And I enjoy the city of Wilmington. I'm glad I moved here. And I probably, this is my last tour. I have 18 years, 18 and a half years in now. I've got another couple of years on retirement. So this is my last go. That's why I kind of, that's why when I seen the BFW, I seen a bunch of good people. I see a good thing like the Queen of Hearts, and I'm there on Wednesday nights. So I see that, it's not an issue, because the ESDA, they're the ones counting the people going in and out of the BFW. And they hit that $300, $300, I should say, 300 person limit, that no one else can go in. And the crowd gets, is garnered over to the side. So they're not in any hindrance of safety for fire or police. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Any other citizens' comments tonight?
Yeah, sure. Pat Hurley. Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping it the way it is now. I know you're talking about safety, and I believe in safety myself. There's other things in this town that's happened that safety doesn't take a backseat for. But I mean, if we're going to call it on that, on that stuff, we need to think about when we have catfish days, and you have people driving in the back of trucks from mud volleyball. I mean, we can stop, you know, we can call every little thing, but I've been at that thing on Wednesday nights. It seems like people really don't overdrink, you know. It's not as big an issue as I think, my personal opinion, it wasn't as big, you know, as the catfish days. If we're going to call a spade a spade, you know, that's just my belief. I just think that what the BFW does is a great thing for this community. And I think they, if I had raffles, I might be misspoken, but for school things and college, that helps this community immensely. Not just the servicemen, and God bless you, but I, that's just my opinion, and I just wanted to state it. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
Dave Melvin. I just wanted to say that from traveling around, like Branson, Missouri, any of you that's been there knows what a traffic jam can do. But they do it because of the revenue that comes in with those people. And that's the main thing. We don't want to shut that off. I talked to the guy at Chickadee. He said he's usually up by 15%, whatever that amounts to. I'm just saying, I don't, we don't want to stop progress. So I think you're on the right track, is to work it out rather than trying to cut it off. Thanks.
Name's Tom Prophet. Member here at the post. I'd ask you to rescind the ordinance instead of suspend it. That way, it's eliminated. It's not going to be snuck in again. And I believe a lot of pressure. If not, I do have some comments. And mainly, you answered some of them, how it's established. What is established procedure for ordinance proposals? Who can originate such proposals? What type of parliamentary procedure governs this action? Does the city council vote on before proceeding with any of this action? Limit our fundraiser, or any fundraiser in this city is sort of idiotic. City administration states it's not about the money. It is the traffic disruption, the extra police, the emergency situation, safety, plus a few other excuses. We've mentioned some of the other activities right now that take place. We have ice hockey, Christmas displays, baseball games, football games, carnival, parades, craft shows, car shows, farmer market, red carpet celebration, catfish days, homecoming, and fireworks, to name a few. Extra police, not enough parking, people from out of state, emergency problems, streets closed, overcrowding, safety, problems all over this city. If you haven't seen them weekly or monthly, it happens. Should we limit all these? I don't think so. I don't think you want to. At least a few of you live in reality. Name one other business that has contributed to this community for well over 55 years, that I know of, let alone how many of you lived here that long. Many of the city ideas to raise money or save money don't work. Annexation of supposed sewer and water route, Eliana tollway, prefab buildings. The BFW and Legions idea did and has worked to support this community. Our city veterans have fought tyranny, anarchy, dictators, and people destroying democracy all over the world. It's too bad we have to come here and fight for it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Bob Thomas. More raised here. I'm in favor of the BFW, just to let you know. I know most of you aldermen. I've dealt with them before, different things. I've been down there every Wednesday just about, and I've watched them. How many of you aldermen have been down there? Look at yourself. I don't recognize hardly any of you guys ever being there, but maybe one or two of you. And yeah, I have two of you out. I like to voice my opinion, whether you like it or not. And that's, I think I got to let them park boards for it, because I can voice my opinion. I ask for you guys to support the BFW, and not go against it. I've watched the police department sit down there in their cars. I was told we had three cops on, and paid overtime to sit down there and help out with traffic. I never saw a cop this last time, when it was $400,000, get out of his car, except for writing a ticket for a dash car two posts to the stop sign, which is about four foot from, four foot from being legal. That's harassment, far as I'm concerned. The cop sitting in their cars, not getting out of their cars, to do nothing until 6:25, when the queen's going to be drawn, then they get out and go inside. I think it's time that maybe some of you aldermen need to get down there and watch, and see what goes on a little bit. You don't have to participate in, but just watch, and maybe you'll get a different opinion. That's all I got about the BFW. I got one more for you. I didn't know what to do. The Holland Police Department is going to rectify these semis driving through people's front yards. He was within two and a half feet of my front door two days ago. If it happens again, and I catch him, I ain't going to wait by cop, slicing him with the wolf's ticket for going across somebody's yard. I probably gonna knock the guy's window out, because he drives across my yard, and he also drives across Larry Hall's yard all the time. We keep having the same problems and that thing. And when you call the police department, it's 15, 20 minutes before they get there, because we have time though. They've come around the neighborhood, they've knocked hydrants loose. Can't catch a semi. Cop's turning around to do it. Am I, as a citizen, supposed to go after these guys? You get a trailer number. Trailer number ain't no good to cops, tell me, because the trailer's an effort from the semis. It's the same excuse I got two months ago when I got ran off going to Joliet. I was on the phone for 20 minutes telling the cops where he was. They never caught the guy. Now I'm going with dash cams in every one of my vehicles. So now I'm going to start catching people a lot better when they're doing stuff like this. And that's also including the cops when they're doing things that I don't think is appropriate, and our city workers. I personally watched a city worker yesterday in a bucket truck, over 15 foot up, without a harness on. I know for a fact OSHA would find the heck out of the city of Wilmington over this. And it ain't even a small fine. I want you to look into it, and make sure that they have their harnesses on from now on. Because if I get a picture of them without it, I will take it right to OSHA. And believe me, I got the cameras to take pictures over a mile away. And they are clear as day. So if you please look into that, I appreciate it, and let me know what to do about the semis in our front yards.
Any other citizens' comments?
And I'm Terry Suri. I'm commander at the BFW. I took over three years ago. Our BFW is failing, just like most of these BFWs around here are going out of business. I took it over, and every week, we had to decide what bills we could pay. Queen of Hearts saved us from closing the doors there. Otherwise, we would have been closing the doors. Then we got the gaming, that helps a little. Our Queen of Hearts is our main state. And it also affects our employees. This gives, this, they make more money too, when we have Queen of Hearts now. And by capping it, it would ruin the Queen of Hearts at our place. And I'm not in favor of it, and I'll reject the $100,000. But I'll work with you about it. But there's so many organizations going out of business and that. And by having the Queen of Hearts, we can do so much for the community, and the soldiers, and people, ordinary people around here with sick kids and everything, which we do. We do not put everything we do in paper. We do not advertise everything. We've got a long list of stuff we could go on and on about. And by capping it, it would ruin it, and it ruined the BFW. And we've been at, we've even had a, in our town, come in and offer to give us three acres of land, prime ground, to move over there. But if we can work it out, we'll stay here. If not, maybe we should move. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments?
Brother Pat Hurley, I just was wondering, I don't know, I've seen a lot of yous around the town. I don't know everyone. Been here 20 years. I'm not here from when I was a kid, but I believe I'm a Wilmington resident, you know. After 20 years, I, I think I am. But I would just like to know, if at all possible, I could ask you guys, how many of you guys have actually been at the BFW post on Wednesday night? If that's a good question. Okay. Thanks. Thanks for clearing that up. I, you know, think all you guys are pretty good, but I just wanted to know that. Thanks.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment to the public?
Sure.
I feel that most of you people are here tonight because of my actions, which was to try to let the public know about this first reading. I am not on the ordinance and license committee. But when I came to city council and heard the first reading, I was at first upset, finding out here at council what was discussed. And I felt that the public needed to know, because I, I see that a lot of our public really cares about the BFW. So I'm glad that everybody came and voiced their opinion. And I'm especially happy that the city of Wilmington and the BFW now can move forward together and try to work this out, instead of just presenting an ordinance that nobody would appreciate. So hopefully, we can work together and keep this town going in the right direction. And thank you for all the donations and the things that you do for our kids and our public. Thank you.
All right. Moving forward, planning a zoning commission. Now, their next council meeting is actually Thursday, February 11th, 5 o'clock. Community reports, building grounds, parks, outdoor safety, Alderman Percy. Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, February 9th, 2016, at 5:30 PM. Water, sewer, streets, and alleys committee, Alderman Stouder, Alderman Kirwin.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, February 10th, 2016, at 6:00 PM.
Police and ESDA, Alderman Stouder, Alderman Tudor.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February 9th, 2016, at 5:30 PM.
Finance Administration and Land Acquisition Committee, Alderman Stouder, Alderman Tudor.
I move to approve the accounts payable report as presented by the city accountant in the amount of $273,469.92.
A motion by Alderman Tudor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Stouder. Any discussion? Roll call both please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Stouder?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirwin?
Yes.
Alderman Percy?
Yes.
Seven, eight yes. Motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February 16th, at 6:00 PM.
Ordinance License Committee, Alderman Hall, Alderman Evans.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a second reading of ordinance, adding provision to Chapter 96 of the Wilmington College Ordinance relating to sandwich board signs.
A suspension of that one, and suspension of the second reading on the raffle ordinance?
Yes, a second reading of ordinance permitting raffle ordinance. We'll keep that back to the committee. the committee. The Thursday, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February ninth, 2016, at six o'clock P.M.
Personnel Collection Department, Alderman Hall, Alderman Percy.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
City administrator, Mr. Green. Chief Police and I attended the E-911 consolidation meeting over in the Fight Fitters Union Hall last week, seems like there's, there is some consensus in regards to the new law that came into place, that the county has to have three 911 consolidation centers. We all know we belong to Westtown, which is one that's gonna be supported, and then the city of Joliet's gonna have their own 911 center, which they have now, and then the rest of the, the county and all the cities that are not in a 911 center, that are consolidating what the county's percentage of them in the county, new county complex for the sheriff's office. It's a very good informational meeting, very well attended, but at this point in time, it seems like there was consensus from a lot of the police chiefs and fire chiefs and officials that the county idea will probably be the best and most cost effective. So there will be other communities that want to shut down the 911 centers, Roanokeville, Lincoln Way, East Town, which is out in the east portion of Raleigh, so the state law goes into effect, they have their plan together by July, so they're pretty aggressive, the architects are already into design, and there's gonna be an advisory board created, and the county is not directing this. The advisory board is like Westtown, we're all members of the Westtown Board, we have representation, so the county 911 center will have their own representation. But then, you know, we learned was, all three of the 911 centers, all the new equipment and everything will be purchased, will all be able to be redundant, and so if there is any type of disaster, any type of issues that are going on, all three of the centers will be able to communicate, but also be backup. If a tornado comes through or something like that happens, we'll have 911 centers that'll be able to pick up if a building gets compromised. So the best thing that we learned was, they are gonna apply for a grant for Westtown to try and get some additional equipment through the consolidation, and, you know, it was good to hear that, I think that grant was gonna be for about six hundred thousand, and that'll help, because one of the things that we need is, we need to update all our radios, the new digital radios, and mandate goes into effect in two, two to three years, so if we're able to get this grant for the consolidation, I think that'll save the city, two of our city's city money, probably close to a hundred fifty thousand dollars to buy those radios. So it's a, it's a good thing, kind of aggressive, like the information, I think, at least for us, were, were pretty well protected, as Westtown's, you know, when somebody is, it meets all the standards. Another thing that this updates, the high-speed rail, we are hoping that they're gonna keep their type cable, they have another public meeting, I think, probably in another six or eight weeks yet, we're still waiting for a few more of the environmental reports, so we don't have anything new to be able to present to our council, how long their meeting plan is, but we do know that we can talk and go above some of the issues and we'll see some of the guys' plans in regards to the P Street. Looks like they've got some other solutions that might work, while people, while people businesses operate, that we're gonna be impacted there, so I think they're, at least everybody's working together at this point with the high-speed rail. Public hearing for next Thursday, we do have a tax amendment there in regards to the process of site plan review. If you remember, the planning commission sort of gave us a tongue-lashing, that, wondering why we have an ordinance for site plan review, especially all the small, like the Power Washington C or, or even the Dollar General. So the tax amendment was recommended, and what it'll basically do is, we now have staff that will review the site plan reviews for those types of operations, but there will be a public hearing about it, and it'll be a planning commission next Thursday, and generally that's what the planning commissions are correcting us to do, is to either, you know, probably ordinance or amend it, so I think we're, we'll see some good results there. Also that night, we have a presentation on a project called Project Phoenix, it's gonna be seven hundred thousand square feet facility out at the Bridgeport, this is also gonna be future rail serve, and the staff has done all the reviews, and there'll be a public hearing on their preliminary and final plaque, and also site plan review. We'll be able to make an announcement on the, on the actual, you know, operator and owner of the, of the company, possibly in the next ten days or so, but it's, it's moving forward, and anticipation is that building will be done by December of 2016, which'll bring about sixty-five to seventy-five jobs to complete.
Third report, Mr. Green.
Thank you, since the last council meeting, I've been involved in a number of matters for the city. As Tony mentioned about the site plan approval, tax amendment, I need to do the statute in regards, and that statute's been changed to make it more difficult to do a tax amendment, because there's always requirement that you're supposed to notify or, or list all of the parcel numbers or all the street addresses that are gonna be affected, which kind of makes it difficult when it's gonna affect, you know, citywide, but, so I reviewed, reviewed proposed public notice for that to make sure we comply with the statute. Also done some simple work in regards to acquiring the right-of-way for when we complete the home road, finalized the closing and the distribution of funds for the easement for American Cell Tower, or American Tower, revised an agreement for leasing the city hall, which I believe is gonna be put forward committee next week, and it will be in court in a couple of weeks in regards to Marathon Station. I've been unable to locate the defendant as well as the attorney general's office have not, have not been able to locate him, so they've tried to do everything, so I'm gonna be in court, asking the court for me to serve the defendant by way of publication, so we're moving forward with that, more of as you're aware, most of the relief, quite a bit of relief we're asking for, we were able to acquire by way of being appointed a receiver and a tax receiver, that's all I got.
All right, good night. Second?
Second?
Yep. Clear, Jerry.